My colleagues and I are pleased you took the time to join us. We appreciate and applaud your commitment to partnering with us in support of our schools, our students, our staff, and our community. While the Board and Brevard Public Schools staff members are fully committed to doing our best to ensure excellence in Brevard Public Schools, we know that our success depends heavily on an engaged and committed community to work alongside us and help us to continually improve. Thank you for being active participants in the process. Pam, roll call please.
Just a moment. Mrs. Belford?
Present.
Mrs. McDougall? Mrs. Duskovich?
Present.
Mr. Susan?
Present.
And Ms. Campbell?
Present.
Thank you Pam. Matt Reed, Assistant Superintendent of Government and Community Relations, will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Can we try to keep that door closed? At this time, I'd like to offer my fellow Board members and Dr. Mullins the opportunity to recognize students, staff, or members of the community. Ms. Belford, can we start with you?
I'd be happy to, Ms. Duskovich. And if you don't mind, I would like to ask for a little leeway in the definition of recognition. Typically, I would provide legislative updates toward the end of our meeting, but today was the start of the Budget Conference, and I would really like to give an update on that while we have our teachers here so they can have an idea of where we are in process and where we're going forward, if that would be okay?
That's absolutely fine. Do you want to wait till they're all in?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and do a couple shout-outs while they're filtering in, and then I'll move to that, if you all are okay with that.
Sounds good to me.
First, thank you, Ms. Duskovich, for your coordination of the Security Summit with the school board members from around the state the other day. I thought it was great conversation and great things covered, and probably very valuable for all of us to have those conversations and know what's going on in other districts as well. So, kudos to you, and thank you to Sheriff Ivy for hosting us at his amazing facility and letting us take up part of his day and his staff. I appreciate it very much. Huge shout-out to Atlantis Elementary. I had the opportunity to join them last week for their Student Talent Show, and the talent show was coordinated by Beth Wallach and Andy Hansen, their music teacher and their PE teacher, and it was actually a fundraiser for their music department so they could purchase instruments for their music department. Students were phenomenal in their performances. I was so proud of them, although it was all girls that performed. And so, Andy, I don't know if any of you know Andy Hansen, but he and Beth decided that to encourage the boys to be in the next talent show, he and Beth performed a duet, and it was his debut for vocals, and he did a phenomenal job. So, if you haven't seen it, it's on my Facebook page, but give Andy a shout-out and Beth a shout-out for the amazing work that they do and the passion that they bring to encouraging their students in various ways. I thought that was awesome.
There's also some video out there of a couple individuals that are here over a talent show that we were in a couple years ago, if they need to provide that or any kind of firsthand knowledge on our experience in those regards.
Appreciate that, Mr. Susan.
Anytime, just offering it up.
Yeah, excellent. Also want to say a thank you to the Titusville community for joining Dr. Mullins and I and several staff members for our community conversation. I think ours was the first one up in Titusville, and got some great feedback, some good recommendations, and had, I think we had about 70 people in the audience, so very much appreciate the community coming out to support that conversation. Also want to give a shout-out to our teachers. I was able to participate in the walk-in at Fair Glen, and so just want to say thank you to them for advocating for additional funding for public education, and was very pleased that it was a positive, encouraging event, so many thanks to them. I'm going to divert now to my not real recognition, but kind of recognition. Several of the Board members probably are aware, but I feel like it's important that teachers know where we are in the legislative process as well. Today was the Budget Conference organizing meeting, and so we're at a really critical point in the legislative process where they are now coming together to determine what is going to be funded in several buckets. So, today was the organizing meeting, and those efforts are led by Senator Bradley and Representative Cummings. However, each of the individual committees are working on different areas of the budget. And so, at this point, the Senate and the House have come together and agreed on the amount of money that's going to be in the K-12 education budget. So, kind of like when we set our budgets, for example, for groceries, maybe we budget, I'll say $100 for groceries this week, but we don't necessarily decide right away what we're spending that $100 on. That's the point at which we are in the Budget Conference. And so, the Senate and the House both came off of their original position a little bit, and they have, at this point, allocated about just under $13 billion from general revenue for K-12 education in Florida. And the reason that I mention this is because this is the time when we, as well as you all, might be well-served to reach out to those individuals who are serving on the budget committees. The way that the process works is each of the committees works on now determining exactly how that $13 billion is going to be spent, and then they will bring anything that can't be settled within their individual committee back to the leaders who will work out those differences. And so, really critical that we are, right now, reaching out respectfully and positively and asking those committee members to advocate that those dollars be spent in the way that is going to be most, to have the greatest positive impact on public education. So, if you can Google Budget Conference Committee if you want to see who those folks are. Unfortunately, we don't have anyone in our local delegation that's sitting on the K-12 committee, but that doesn't mean that we can't reach out to them and help to educate them on the issues that are challenging for public education. For anyone who is not familiar, one of our only sources of flexible revenue comes through what's called the Base Student Allocation, and that is the amount that last year we got a 47-cent increase in our BSA. The bulk of the other funding that comes out of Tallahassee is through categoricals, which means they tell us exactly how to spend those dollars. An enormous amount of money last year went to things like mental health and security, and we know that there are agendas from leadership in both houses taking place this year as well, but it would be really great if you don't know what to say to them as to encourage them how to best impact public education, that Base Student Allocation would be a really great area to focus, because that's the only funding that is available to us to provide raises for you all. And so, it's really, really critical that we encourage them to put as much funding into that Base Student Allocation as possible as they're going through this conference process. There are lots of other areas that we could certainly communicate with them about, best and brightest still on the table, and potentially could be massaged to allow that to be a pay raise as opposed to a bonus. There are some, lots of funds and voucher programs and those sorts of things. So, if you are interested, if you want more information, I don't want to belabor the issue and go on forever this evening, but I do think that it's critical that we are reaching out to them right now and letting them know how they can best serve us. So, if you want more information, reach out to me, belford@missdey@brevardschools.org, if you need specifics, or if you want to, you know, ask some questions about the process or specifics of the budget, I would be more than happy to answer that. But I think it's important to understand that we on the Board are only five votes, and you guys are a whole lot more votes. So, even though you're not voting on anyone sitting on that actual committee, I think it's important that we have that communication. And then the last piece that I will say is, I think it's important to understand that our legislators are dealing with a multitude of issues, and so their area of expertise may not be education. And so, sometimes we have to educate them on how those various decisions impact us, and explaining that BSA being the flexible funding is one area that they really need to understand, how we can utilize those dollars to have positive impact. So, thank you, Madam Chair, for allowing me a couple of minutes to get on my budget and advocacy soapbox.
No, very important. We appreciate that update. Thank you so much. Do you have any other recognitions?
No, the only thing that I would say on the conference, you all can actually go back and watch that on Florida Channel. You can watch what took place today, but very interestingly, and I haven't seen this in years past, the communication between the two chambers has been very friendly, and several times it was referenced how good they are working together. Earlier in the week, there was some speculation that they may go beyond session and have to go into special session to resolve budget issues, but they seem very determined to work together and come to conclusions. So, that can be a good thing, as long as we get them on the same page.
Thank you, Ms. Belford. Mr. Susan?
I also wanted to reiterate what Ms. Belford said. I wanted to give a shout-out to the teachers as I was at Ralph Williams, walking into the schools for the raises also. I think everybody, but I think everybody up there needs to understand that in our own way, we're all fighting for the raises the same way. I think that my other school board members, I've never seen passion in getting to there too. I mean, Ms. Duskovich and I are going to be in Tallahassee tomorrow, speaking to legislators, and I'm going to be focusing on the House budget side because they're the ones that are lower than the Senate side. I do know that Dr. Mullins and everybody else have been pounding our legislators and others to try to get our Base Student Allocation up. Just so that you guys know, the House is roughly at about 150, Senate's at about 350. We need to get the House to get to 250 to 275. The Senate's holding strong in making it to where this is a key component of their budget, whereas the House is trying to play a little bit. So, if you are looking at that budget estimating conference, or you're looking in there who to call, focus on your House members and tell them how much that Base Student Allocation means, and that they need to match the Senate's allocation. I do want to, I did want to say thank you to Sue Han for a Capitol Outlay Meeting that we had yesterday. She basically laid out all of the issues that we have to our city managers throughout the entire county, all the way from the grasping mow at the different facilities and everything else. And let me tell you why that's kind of important. All of the city managers came together and said, "How can we help the schools?" And some of them stood up and said, "We don't mind taking over when you guys get swamped with the mowing to go in and help mow some of those areas for you." Other people said, "Let's work together on different things." So, I really wanted to give Ms. Sue Han a shout-out for all the hard work that you do, because that's extra on top of what we normally do, and it's definitely beneficial for what you do. So, thank you so much, Sue. I really appreciate everything that you're doing there. I did have the absolute opportunity, amazing opportunity, to go to Johnson Space Center last week, and some people keep saying, "Like, what is this thing that you keep talking about?" And I realized I haven't done a good explanation because I get so excited about it. But here's what's happening. NASA is looking for a place to create a manufacturing center where students will make parts that go to the International Space Station. So, here's how it works. Your astronauts that take off here and go into outer space are in this International Space Station, and they have all of these components that they have to build in order to make up their file lockers, everything, and when they go to Northrop Grumman or they go to these places, they say, "Well, that's a specialty item, that's $100,000." So, what NASA said was, "There's a definite need to manufacture these goods somewhere," and what they wanted to do is create a partnership where they're going to offer to put four NASA engineers inside of a school that work 12 months a year, and what they do is they manufacture parts for the International Space Station alongside with our kids so that they can gain the experience, and the kids that work there, guess where they get an opportunity to go to work over the summer, is also manufacturing and going to launch facilities out at Kennedy Space Center. The opportunity is absolutely phenomenal in the fact that no other school in the state of Florida has this opportunity. So, I was just, I was crawling through the mock-up of the space station because that's what they have at Johnson, is they have the real astronauts that are going up next month, and they have us inside the space station, and they're saying, "This is what else we need, this is what we need." I just, absolute amazing opportunity, and I have to give all the credit to Dennis Soboliski and Janice Schultz, who are Head of Career and Technical, because this never would have happened without them. Their passion for our kids is amazing, and just with that, that program alone will put us on the map nationally. So, that was a big deal, and I was really proud to be a part of it. I do have a shout-out that I wanted to do. We have a, we're trying to create a community track at Viera High School, so I'm going to be basically running around and fundraising for the next three months for, to build the track. We also having a Viera Eat My Crust 5K where all the proceeds go to the track, so if you guys run and you'd love to come support it, please do. It's going to be a community track like Satellite where we allow people in the community to go run on in the evening and stuff like that. So, I wanted to give a shout-out to that, and with that, I'm good. For real, though, this is the time for you guys to reach out with us, to go and try to get that House to come up on the budget. If there's ever a time for us to unify and make a fight, it's now. Being a former building rep for nine years with the Teachers Union, for being a teacher, being one of you, being in Tallahassee for all nine years, fighting for teachers' raises when I was a teacher, and knowing the commitment that we have up here as a Board and what we were dealt last year, it's up to us together now to put aside our differences and go up to Tallahassee and get us this, get the revenue that we need to create the raises that we know we can give. So, I look forward to seeing the emails. You can CC me, I'll CC as many people as we can, and let's make the big push, because now's time. With that undone, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Susan. Ms. Campbell?
Thank you, Ms. Belford, for keeping us always up to date and serving on the FSB Legislative Committee, because I know that's a lot of extra time on your part. Appreciate you. We had our District Five Community Conversation Meeting at Heritage High School last week, and didn't have a huge crowd, but I just wanted to thank all the administrators that showed up, and I don't think that they were threatened into going, but I was, there were a lot of principals, and they shared some great ideas. Some of our teachers that were there shared great ideas. Of course, we had parents there too, but had some fantastic ideas coming out of that meeting, and I appreciate the administrators being there because they wanted to hear too. People were going to talk about their schools, they wanted to hear what they had to say, so I was very thankful to see them as well. We are winding down, and so it is, because the testing's moved to May, all of our fine arts programs are going to be doing their end-of-the-year programs. If they haven't already done them, they're going to be doing them the next couple of weeks, and so I encourage you to get out, if you need a little fine arts in your life, to our programs. I got to go to a couple of musicals a few weekends ago. Heritage High School did Fame Junior, and then Bayside did Pippin. They were fantastic. Our students are so talented, and our fine arts teachers at our high schools are just opening doors for our students to do some pretty amazing things, and really looking forward this summer to our summer fine arts musical theater workshop, where we're going to get to see students from lots of different schools coming together under the leadership of our teachers to do some even more amazing performances. April is School Library Month, and so last Monday, I got to be the librarian for the day at Meadow Lane Primary, and Virginia Campbell, who is the media specialist there, was a gracious host, and I had a fantastic day getting to join her in some lessons and Makerspace activities, and getting to read, go through a book on different kinds of buildings around the world. Meadow Lane Primary is one of Florida's power library schools, and it's kind of like the fine arts model schools for media centers, and so there's, it takes a lot to get it done, and I'm super proud of Meadow Lane Primary for serving that. And Ms. Campbell as well is serving this year on the Sunshine State Reader Committee for the primary grades, and so those lists just came out, and so proud of her accomplishments in that area. Ms. Duskovich and I got to attend a UNICEF Club Event at Mel High last week, and the students there were, we got to share the stage with some pretty incredible women. Melbourne City Council, Debbie Thomas, and the mayor, Kathy Mehan, was there. It was not on the panel, but she was in attendance as well, and we had a few engineers and business people, and a student from FIT who is into jet car racing, and so just, it was a great opportunity to share with our students, male and female, the changes that have happened, and the wonderful opportunities that women have to have roles in government and business and engineering, and to encourage those girls to work hard and to pursue their passions. I got to visit the South Area Alternative Learning Center last week with Christine Moore, and that has been a topic of conversation frequently for the Board since I've joined just in the last five months. But I will say that I had, I was really blown away, and I shared this on my page, because we had four students who, there were students who requested meetings. They looked at the assistant principal and said, "I want to talk to your boss." And so, Ms. Moore went, but I went with her, and so they got, they were so appreciative of being able to be heard. But I want, my shout-out is to the teachers and staff that work there at the South ALC because they have done such a great job with these students, at least these four. I know every student's not like these four, but every single one of them presented their issues and their concerns in such a respectful way, and they advocated for themselves, and they were so self-aware. There was, the first student that walked in was a seventh grader, and he was so self-aware. He could look back, and he knew where he came from and what, how he had changed and what he needed, and so I'm so thankful. I know a lot of that change had to do with the counseling and the social workers and the teachers who have worked with him over the last several months, and so I just want to thank the staff there at the South ALC, and I'm sure similar things are going on at the North ALC, because they have a really, really tough job, but they are making a difference in those students' lives, and all four of the students that we got to speak with were just on point with the way that they presented themselves. The final thing is, I've asked, you know, we've had our PIN recognition that we're doing for bridge building and excellence achieving and big dreaming, but being kind of new to this role, I have asked for help through social media, and I'm really excited because the last couple days, I have gotten seven or eight emails from people, from parents, from coworkers, from a CP, Child Protective Service investigator, naming our staff, speech therapists and teachers and office staff, and just different people who have had a huge impact, and the stories are like paragraphs long. So, I'll be happy to recognize those staff members and teachers in the coming weeks, but it's really great to see staff members recognizing one another and to see the impact that you guys are having on the community. So, I'm really excited to start giving out those PINs.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Dr. Mullins?
Thank you, Ms. Duskovich. I'd like to, I think last meeting, I highlighted the April 13th, or upcoming Jazz, All-County Jazz Festival Concert at the King Center, and I think I may have even said it's one of my favorite all-county concerts. Well, I was not disappointed. It was an absolutely phenomenal performance by both our middle-school jazz bands and our high-school jazz bands, so my shout-out just to our music teachers do a phenomenal job of training up, inspiring up, and supporting our, the future musicians of our community. It was a fantastic concert. I had a unique experience last weekend, April 15th, excuse me, April 13th, visiting for the first time the Viera Wetlands, and I don't know if you've had the opportunity to visit the wonder of the wetlands. They celebrated the 10-year anniversary right here in the Viera community. It was an absolutely fantastic natural environment. We watched sunset over the wetlands, it was, and watched thousands of birds come into the, I'm not going to get the right word, where birds come into aviary, I think is what they call, the hammock of vegetation. It was beautiful. If you've not had the privilege of visiting the wetlands, I highly recommend it, particularly before it gets too hot, but it was a beautiful evening. I had my SGA Student Shadowing Experience on April 15th last week at Merritt Island High School. Ariann was my student who I shadowed. It was a great day, or great afternoon at Merritt Island High School. My shout-outs to Ariann, she's SGA president, a completely impressive young lady, will be graduating, and she is going to go on to do great things. I would not be surprised if politics are in her future. She is such an outgoing individual. She probably greeted 20 students by name around campus as we were walking around, and not just her friends. These were students of all ages and all across the campus. I was so impressed with her as a student leader and the impact she's having on our campus, and I attribute that to Mr. Roach, who is the, his teacher there, he's the SGA sponsor, has a student leadership elective class, just a very positive influence on students. He participated on my team in the kickball game that we had a couple days later at Merritt Island High. If you may remember, I committed to a kickball game with the school who raised the most money for the Real Men Wear Pink campaign. It was Merritt Island High School as well, and it was also a fantastic time with our students and faculty from Merritt Island High School, and it doesn't matter who won, but...
I guess he lost.
I won't, and I would be remiss if I didn't say we did have a couple student ringers on our team, but made us look a lot better than we would otherwise. And thank you to Ms. Belford and Ms. Campbell for hosting the Community Conversation Meetings with me. Do a note that Monday, April 29th, Community Conversation, O'Gally High School for District Four, May 3rd, District Three at Satellite High School, and May 14th, District Two at Merritt Island High School. So, Mr. Susan and I are together on Monday, and look forward to having our community come together. Also had a meeting with our maintenance community for Community Conversation last Friday. Met with them at the Rockledge High School Auditorium, had to have been well over 100 staff members, and really a great conversation, some good feedback and suggestions of things that we can do to be more efficient with the resources we do have, and so I appreciate their work, as I said that morning, completely behind the scenes, making so much happen that we too often take for granted. So, a shout-out to Ms. Hand as well, and Mr. Ross, and so many other of our district leaders to support our teams out there, doing great work to support our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins. I'd like to start off with Phantom of the Opera. If you have never seen it, as I have never seen it, I'll be enjoying it this weekend at Satellite High School, Thursday night, Friday night, Saturday night, 7:00 PM, and Sunday at 2:00 PM. You can buy tickets by going to Satellite High's website. There's a link right on there. So, they're $15, and I have a feeling they're going to do an amazing job. So, if you're looking for something to do this weekend, here, they're going to sell out, so get your tickets. Ms. Campbell and Dr. Mullins and I attended Sea Park's 60th Anniversary, and our hearts were full when we left there. What a perfect, ideal, community-based school. It's a small school, it's one of our smallest schools. It was built and opened in 1959, and they had a newspaper clipping for any time Sea Park has ever been in the paper since 1959 saved, and to just see pages and pages of history. The school has had over 1,000 students at times. It's gone down to 300 students at times. It has almost been closed several times and made it by the skin of its teeth to stay open, and newspaper clippings of people in tears at board meetings as it wasn't closed, and it's very emotional. We were able to meet third-generation Sea Park students and second-generation, current teachers teaching in the classroom that they attended when they were in first grade with their mother there who used to teach also in that same classroom, and it was just, everybody was. And then I posted some pictures online, and people were saying, "Oh, you know, my son too, we're the third-generation Sea Park students." So, really was a beautiful experience to really celebrate with them, 60 years of an excellent school. Two weeks ago, Dr. Mullins and I were asked to speak at the Teacher Leadership Academy, and that was put together by Linda Buffham and Bridget Reed, and it's really, they're really doing a remarkable job putting teachers that aspire to move into teacher leadership positions, or even maybe ultimately into administration, through a program of exposing them to areas that they need to grow into leadership positions, and we had a really great time with these teachers. It was very candid conversation, it was a very open discussion. They shared with us a lot of their concerns. We shared with them a lot about our role and what we do, and I think it was a very successful evening. Now I have three more, and then I'll wrap it up. And these were all PINs that were awarded this week, and I really want to acknowledge these ladies. They were all at Port Malabar Elementary School. The Big Dreamer PIN was, she was nominated by her principal, Ms. Cindy Whalen, and it went to Heather Hammond. She is a school counselor there, and some of the things that her principal said about her is that she, she's always looking for ways to support and inspire their students. She's always involved in the latest trends to improve mental health. She works on building the character of all students at the school. She coaches Odyssey of the Mind. She sponsors her favorite club. She is the epitome of Big Dreamer, and she wrote up a whole, you know, a whole page on her and her great qualities, and I was honored to award her the Big Dreamer PIN. was honored to award her the Big Dreamer PIN. Ms. Mary Garito, Garito is their ESAL teacher. And this woman has so much life in her. Everyone around there loves her, hands down. And my favorite quote out of what the write-up was from Ms. Whalen on her was that she puts on these potluck dinners whenever she meets with the ESAL parents to kind of bring the community in. And she has everyone bring food from their ethnic background. And she said, quote, "Breaking bread with her families has created lasting friendships and established warm, supportive relationships for our students." And, and you can see that. You can see that on the campus. You can see that in her personality, in her room, her relationship with her students. And, and so we're very grateful to have her in our district. And I know Ms. Whalen is grateful to have her at her school. And last but not least is Michelle King. She's the literacy coach there at Port Malabar Elementary School. And Ms. Whalen said about her, "Her work is accurate without fault and her enthusiasm for our school never wanes. She is a perfect example of an excellence achiever." So we awarded her with the Excellence Achiever PIN. She said, "Her work ethic is outstanding and she never complains. She goes above and beyond in every task and her support of their school is phenomenal." And of course, you know, another full page about how amazing this woman is. So we are grateful for our employees and especially this week, I'm grateful for those three at Port Malabar Elementary School. Thank you.
Okay. That brings us to the adoption of the agenda. Dr. Mullins.
Ms. Duskovich and members of the board, on this evening's agenda, we have administrative staff recommendations, one presentation, 28 consent items, two action items, one of which is a public hearing and two information items. You also have the yellow supplemental agenda, which are changes made to the agenda since being released to the public on Tuesday, May 16th. Item 2019. Item A7 on administrative staff recommendations, F10 on meeting minutes, F11 on student expulsions and F34 on educational facilities impact fees received revisions. An item on job description, accountant one and job description, retirement specialists were deleted from this agenda.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Moved by Mr. Susan, second by Ms. Belford. Any discussion? Please vote. Motion passes 4-0. Do I have to account for Ms. McDougal? Not. So I just say motion passes 4-0? Is that a, great, thank you Pam. Motion passes 4-0. Dr. Mullins, will you please let us know about the administrative staff recommendations?
There are four persons on this agenda item for the board to consider.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, second by Ms. Campbell. Any discussion? Please vote. Motion passes 4-0. Dr. Mullins.
I would like to welcome and congratulate Ms. Lena Wibelt on our reclassification and transfer from the position of principal at Bayside High School to the position of Director of Secondary Leading and Learning. Congratulations, Ms. Wibelt.
Good evening. I'd like to thank Dr. Mullins and the board for this opportunity. I'd like to thank Dr. Sullivan for always believing in me. Jerry Pullman, Molly Vega and Robin Novelli for their support. One of my biggest fans here tonight, former assistant principal and amazing principal of Hoover Middle School, Bert Clark, who came out to support me. And last but not least, my Bayside family who warmly embraced me two years ago when I showed up on their doorstep. We've done some amazing work over the last two years and I know they'll continue it without me and they will always remember to show their pride in Bayside. Go Bears. Thank you.
Next, a little bit of a bittersweet, but we want to welcome Dr. Michael Cornot, Principal of Stevenson Elementary, and wish him well on his upcoming and anticipated retirement. Dr. Cornot, thank you for your years. Yeah, we can go ahead and do that. Dr. Cornot, I know I already expressed my own appreciation at our leadership team meeting, but thank you again for your dedication and service to the students of Stevenson, the only principal of Stevenson Elementary School, if I remember correctly. You leave huge shoes to fill, but a lasting impact of leadership in the Stevenson community.
Thank you. On behalf of the board, Dr. Mullins, certainly Ms. Jane Klein. Comes emotionally to leave. It's time for me to do it. I have nothing but the fondest of memories right now as I think about the 19 years that I've spent at Stevenson. The children every day warmed my heart. When I see them working collectively together to problem solve and to find the words to express, sometimes I think they do say the darnedest things. I want to thank the parents for their commitment and passion and support of Brevard County Public Schools, for Stevenson especially. They have an undying commitment. And then lastly, I have never worked with a finer group of teachers. I view them as smart, dedicated, compassionate and passionate about what they do to elevate kids every single solitary day. They are truly a pleasure to work with. I mean that with the bottom of my heart. I see one of them right here. And I guess I leave Brevard County Public Schools with memories and memories and many memories. And as I fade into the sunset, as they say, so to speak, I go fondly with those memories. And I thank Brevard County Public Schools for that opportunity.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Mullins, let's proceed with the presentation this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Duskovich. Ms. Penny Zirker, Chief Financial Officer, will provide us with an audit update. Ms. Zirker.
Good evening. As we've been doing for about a year and a half now, every time the Audit Committee meets and accepts audit reports, I come before you to share with you the audit reports that the board, Audit Committee has approved. Today's Audit Update will cover the most recent half-cent sales tax as well as some internal audit follow-up report. The half-cent sales tax, this is our sixth one that we've done since the establishment of the half-cent sales tax. The purpose is to test financial reporting to the ICOC, its appropriateness, its existence and most importantly, its accuracy and valuation. The audit period under consideration is December 1st, 2017 through June 30th. And the procedures included revenue, testing revenues, expenditures and procurement. And again, for the fifth time in a row, I'm happy to say there were no exceptions found in the audit. The internal audit follow-up, this is through our Internal Accounts District Level. Centralization of processes and sponsor training. This continues to move forward on the centralized internal accounts. We're just about through with the deposits and P-card implementation and currently are piloting schools on check writing. Through this, the thing that they did find was the training schedule for training our teacher sponsors for the summer at the teacher conference meetings in both the secondary and elementary. They will again test in December 2019 for the training schedule. Under community relations advertising revenue, they looked at the internal funds accounting strings created, procedures developed to address billing and collections and the risk related to the manual processing accepted. Separate accounting software that was originally recommended was deemed not feasible at this time, but the manual mitigation has been accepted by RSM and the finding has been closed. They still have three additional follow-ups to do that they will be working on here in the spring. That's a payroll timekeeping update, transportation services, inventory, fuel and purchasing card procedures, and then another look at the Internal Accounts District Level that they'll begin late May, early June. If anyone is interested in obtaining copies of the audit report, they may contact my office and the information is available on the screen. Be happy to take any questions the board may have.
Thank you, Ms. Zirker. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Zirker? Thank you for your time. We are now to the public comments portion of our meeting. Though school board policy 0169.1 limits to 30 minutes, the portion of the meeting during which the public is invited to participate and provide public comment. Policy further provides that this time limit may be extended by the vote of the board. We have four speakers signed up this evening. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. We have a clock in front of me to help you keep track of your time. When your time is over, you'll be asked to stop and allow the next speaker his or her turn. Always keep in mind that reasonable decorum is expected at all times and your statement should be directed to the board chairman. The chairman may interrupt, warn or terminate a participant's statement when the time is up, personally directed, abusive, obscene or irrelevant. Should an individual not observe proper etiquette, the chairman may request the individual leave the meeting. Let's all encourage an environment appropriate for our children who may be present or watching for home, from home. Let's begin with our first three speakers, Anthony Calucci, Vanessa Skipper and Jonathan Hilliard.
My name is Anthony Calucci. I'm honored to fight for the Brevard Federation of Teachers. Last meeting was the sixth time our teachers rallied in order to draw attention to the fact that Brevard County teachers are amongst the worst-paid teachers in the nation. It was the sixth time courageous teachers got up here and poured their hearts out. Last meeting, we finally got a response. But rather than address any of the issues surrounding pay, it was mostly discussion about contempt for BFT leaders because we're not separating issues from people. Of course, when politicians can't solve problems, they want to be separated from them. This union will never separate politicians from issues. After all, the board members create and vote on the budget. The budget doesn't create itself. There will be accountability for not supporting teachers. We will always hold politicians accountable for their failure to live up to campaign promises and correct issues. And you don't support teachers, you don't support teachers if you don't support their union. You don't support teachers if you don't reply to them when they express their concerns meeting after meeting after meeting. You don't support teachers when you chastise them when they come to these meetings and express their concerns. And you don't support teachers when you engage in protest shaming. Protest shaming is a way for those in power to maintain control and deflect from issues. Whereas last meeting, it was said that no one has ever been insulted into agreement. We believe that power concedes nothing without a demand. It never did and it never will. No matter how we protest, there is always someone who wants to shame us. How can you work to the contract? Don't you know that hurts kids? Do you really think chanting in the streets is a good example for students? How do you think airing concerns in a public forum makes this district look? What were the latest attempts at shaming? That a public display of frustration is ineffective and that Walk-ins weren't acceptable because they were sponsored by the Florida Education Association? Your teachers are the Florida Education Association. Now, of course, BFT is open to collaboration, productive discussion and civility, but that does not happen when we speak and you do not respond. I am excited that we did manage to collaborate on our Walk-ins last week, that Ms. Belford, Ms. McDougal and Mr. Susan walked in with our teachers and helped spotlight the lack of state funding for public education. And we're grateful for the ongoing support that our administrators have provided us this entire year. Teachers are cheering for us because they see and hear how hard we're working. They need to see and hear how hard you're working and you need to create a budget that rewards them for their work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Calucci. Go ahead, Ms. Skipper.
Good evening, members of the board. Dr. Mullins, Vanessa Skipper, Vice President of the Brevard Federation of Teachers and proud English teacher from this district. I've spoken to you guys time after time. I've said it before for six years in the classroom. Now I'm out of the classroom. I can't say, you know, if I would have said 12, 13 years ago when I started teaching that I would be doing this, but I believe passionately in this profession. I believe passionately in our students and I do believe in collaboration. I can't speak to any single board member because that's against the rule, but I have emailed board members and never received a reply. I have spoken at public comment for six years and sometimes never received any kind of communication back from my comment. The only time I can get you guys all in the same room to talk to you is at public comment here. So I absolutely 100% believe in collaboration. I've handed you folders of research from the Economic Policy Institute regarding salary. I've handed you folders of research and what's happened as far as the passing of referendums in this county. I've asked for participation in numerous things that we have done throughout the years, including working together to meet with legislators for common needs. I am thrilled, 100% thrilled, that you started the meeting out with explaining to our teachers what exactly is happening from your end. In fact, as you were speaking, a mass text message went out from the Florida Education Association to our membership who have signed up for those alerts to reach out to their legislators with the very same budget concerns that you guys mentioned. These are things that we do every single day and think how much more powerful we could be if we did actually work together. I am so excited to see the amount of administrators that encouraged not only the Walk-ins at their schools, but walked in with their teachers. The SROs walked in with the teachers. The staff, faculty and staff walked in with the teachers. If you're interested, you go to FEAActionCenter.org. Anybody can go there. You put in your name and information. It will link you directly to your legislator so you can call or email. That site's been up for years. I want to give a shout out to Ms. McDougal, even though she's not here. She and I had a very good meeting regarding some concerns I sent out about both ALCs and what we're going to do to work together. In fact, both she and I shadowing different days and different situations to figure out what's needed. And what was supposed to be a 30-minute meeting turned into two hours of solid discussion. And that's because she returned my phone calls and she returned my emails when I asked. So I've sent out communications. All you have to do is respond. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Skipper.
Good evening. Jonathan Hilliard, teacher and Vice President of Brevard Federation of Teachers. Two weeks ago, I had an opportunity to speak with you and I spoke about keeping the main thing, the main thing. Well, tonight I want to talk to you about what if. I teach fourth grade and you know, fourth graders are great about the what-if scenarios. Mr. Hilliard, what, what if a sinkhole swallows up the swings and we all fall in? They love to what if. Recently, the what-ifs have changed due to the drills that we've had, the shelter in place, those drills. And when we come back or we debrief, they give me some more what-ifs. And the what-ifs allow me to really get in touch with some anxieties, some fears and sometimes some really, really good thoughts and ideas. So let's what if for just a moment. What if Brevard County was the highest-paid county in Florida? What if? What if people from, teachers from Orange County wanted to drive an hour and 20 minutes to come to our. to come to our county to teach because they were appreciated and recognized and paid an incredibly affordable wage, a living wage? What if? What if our number-one achieving teachers were also number-one paid teachers? What if? What if the teachers that are always mentioned at the low end of some statistical scale were now at the top end of that scale? What if? There's an African proverb that says it takes an entire village to raise a child. Well, let's take a look at the village right here in Brevard County. We all agree, parents are number one. Parents influence our children the most. They spend the most time. But look at who number two is. Teachers. Teachers. What if we were able to think outside of the box and look at budgets differently? What if we were to prioritize the needs of our teachers and make them number one? What if Brevard was not only the best teachers, but the highest-paid teachers in the state of Florida? What if? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hilliard. Our final speaker is Mr. Ronald Bradley.
Y'all miss me?
Of course.
I've got a few unanswered questions that I'd like to find. After the meeting, I'd like for somebody to let me know who I need to talk to. I spend a lot of time doing stuff at home. And I found out, out of 13 counties, Brevard County has got more buses than any county of the 13. I found out that there's five counties that schools don't have air conditioning in all the buses. I found out that some counties have got hardly any spare buses. And I'm wondering why we have so many spare buses. I've been to Haiti, Nicaragua, El Salvador, and they take a bus here in the States that they think it's completely wore out. They take it over there and they fix it all up. They take the automatic transmission, put a road ranger in it because to going up the mountains, the automatic transmission wouldn't last. They put a jake brake. And if you don't know what a jake brake, if you ever heard one in your house, it shake the windows. They don't need air horns. When they come down the mountains, they pull that jake brake and everybody gets out of the way. Now, why do we have so many extra buses? And why do so many extra other counties? There's a lot of counties. I'll give you this sheet. It's proof. And you could find out. We have vehicles, brand-new vehicles. We've got six automotive shops. Why don't you let them repair the vehicles that broke down and let these boys get some experience? I understand that some of these auto schools, they're not getting enough money to buy hand cleaner and towels to keep the kids' hands clean. Now, if you want to do the trades, get it done and get it in right or get out of it. What you're going to do is keep fooling around because all you're going to have is charter schools and different schools because our public schools aren't doing the job that they're supposed to be doing. And that's my story and I'm sticking to it.
Thank you, Mr. Bradley. Would any board member like to make any comments? Ms. Belford.
So, a couple of things. Mr. Bradley, if you would like to touch base with... Kevin, can you have that conversation? Mr. Bradley, Kevin Thornton in the back of the room. He was our interim COO. I just gave you a promotion, Kevin. Interim COO and handles our transportation issues. So he, I'm sure, can answer some of your questions more specifically. So I'll let him go into those specifics, but I'm sure he'd be happy to take a look at the information that you brought forward. Mr. Calucci, you and I had a lengthy conversation after the last board meeting and a spirited conversation. And I think, I hope, you would agree that I think it was a beneficial conversation for us to have. One thing that I think there is some misunderstanding on is my discussion was not primarily about my contempt for BFT leaders. My discussion was an admission that I had been allowing myself to feel some contempt, but also addressing the contempt that the BFT leaders have been displaying toward the board. And I would absolutely agree with the statement that you put forward that power concedes nothing without demand. But I think where we are differing and where I'm questioning is what that demand needs to look like. And the message that I conveyed last board meeting was, we absolutely need to disagree and we need to demand, but we need to do it better between us and between us and the legislature, between you and the legislature. Because while absolutely you have to demand to get difference, I think the way that you do that demand impacts your success. And I understand from your perspective that you all have been coming for six meetings and speaking and protesting or picketing or whatever you want to call it. I don't want to give that a negative connotation because I don't think that teachers having a voice is a bad thing. I think it's critically important that teachers have a voice in Brevard County and throughout the state. But what I do think that we need to realize is the impact of how we choose to have those disagreements and use our voice is critically important. Ms. Skipper, you and I had, and I'm sorry to call you out, Ms. Skipper, without... Mr. Calucci knew that we were going to have this conversation. But I don't mean to call you out, but you and I also had a conversation at the end of the last board meeting. And you said, you know, "We've been coming for six meetings and finally we got movement on language." And my response to you was, we got movement because board members and because staff members have been working hard to find a way to make that work, not necessarily because of the way that the communication's been taking place. And I absolutely would like to be able to collaborate with you all in conversations with our legislators. But for me, the way that we have those conversations is critically important. And what I don't want to do is to... I don't want to hamper our progress and the way that our message is received. And so that's why that has been a big area of focus for me, is making sure... And you all have heard me, I don't know how many times, when I spoke at the beginning of the meeting today, I said, "It's time for us to respectfully ask that they allocate those dollars in the way to have the greatest impact on public education." And I think that's important. And I think really, if you all think about it, it makes sense. If a student comes to you and they're respectful and they say, "Hey, I'm really struggling on this issue. Can you help me?" Absolutely, you feel inclined to help them. If a student comes to you and they're yelling at you or insulting you, and I'm not saying that all of you have been doing that, I'm just giving the example of the issue and why it's so important, the likelihood of listening is much smaller. And my point at the last board meeting was, this issue is so incredibly important, not only to the board, not only to BFT, not only to the teachers, but, you know, I could get on my soapbox about the importance of education in our society and the long-term impact in our community, that we have to make sure that we're focusing on how to get the best outcome. And that was what my message was last board meeting. So if there was misunderstanding of my intent behind that message, I will publicly apologize for that. But I do stand behind what I said, and that is, people don't get insulted into agreement. And I am willing to stand toe-to-toe and have disagreements, like you and I did, Mr. Calucci, after we spoke the next day after the board meeting. I think that's productive. I think it furthers us and our efforts. But it is critically important to me that we do it in a way that is respectful, not only among us, but also when we're having those conversations with our legislators. So if anyone wants any additional clarification on my intent, my message, by all means, reach out to me and I will be happy to discuss it. One of the reasons that we tend to not respond from up here is because exactly what's going to happen tonight, and that is, I am going to have an opportunity to respond to Mr. Calucci and he's not going to get an opportunity to respond back to me until next meeting or not publicly. We'll have a conversation, I'm sure, before then. So that's one of the issues with us responding is we get last word, which I don't think probably feels very good to you all. And so we tend to not respond from up here on several issues. I will address some of the things that came up tonight. There was comment about our funding and why we are not the highest-paid teachers. And I think I've explained to you all a little bit about the base student allocation, and that doesn't differ. All of the districts in the state got the same basic increase in base student allocation. However, there's also another factor called the district cost differential. And if you're not familiar with that concept, what Florida did was they put a formula in place many years ago to equalize funding in districts throughout the state. And so if your cost of living is lower than 1.0, which is how they rate it, then your district actually gives up funding to other districts in the state. Brevard County is one of those districts that loses money through the district cost differential. The other aspect that we face here in Brevard, obviously, we've all talked about the lack of millage in Brevard, which impacts our ability to fund, and you guys know where I stand on that, I think. But the other thing that we experience is that our cost of living is significantly lower in Brevard County. And yes, we are absolutely lower than teachers in other districts, and we need to work on fixing that. So don't mince my words, don't think I'm making excuses. I'm just trying to understand or trying to explain where some of our funding difficulty comes from. If you look at all industries for all counties in the state of Florida, Brevard County's average pay for all industries in the state of Florida is approximately $4,500 between the average of all industries in the state. And so our community is funded lower. Now, does that help you all when you can cross the county line and get a higher-paying job in Orange County? Absolutely not. And we realize that, and we continue to work on it. But there are multiple factors that go into the available funding, which is why I implore you all to reach out to the legislators and have that conversation about the base student allocation, because that's where we get the funds available to provide teacher raises. I think the only other thing that I want to say is the comment was made about protest shaming. And I am in no way attempting to protest shame. As I said, I think your voice is important. I do think that in some instances, we need to think about the impact. I had a teacher, when I joined you all for the walk, that made a comment to me that she was upset that a board meeting back in December, as you all were coming in chanting, we had asked you all to quiet down. And I think our security folks had done the same thing. And I can understand why that would be perceived. I would like to give you all an explanation as to why that takes place. One, we had a large group of very small children in the room that day. And I will tell you, even on the walk that I did with you all on the 17th, I had a young girl behind me that was walking in with her mother. And as the chanting started, for any of you who were there, the "Red for Ed" chant started as we were entering the stairwell, the little girl behind me absolutely broke down. She was terrified. It was absolutely overwhelming for her. And so I think that absolutely is a consideration. You've heard us ask that we make sure that everything is appropriate for children as far as comments. And that night, we had a large group of small children in here, and that is an intimidating scene for them. The other thing that I think plays a part in that is, this is a public meeting and you all are coming in after we have started our public meeting. So I kind of equate it to, if you're teaching in a classroom and you have a group of students that are upset with you about exams or whatever, and you have started your lesson and they march into your classroom chanting, I don't think it would be very well received. So while I encourage you to absolutely have voice, I ask you to also understand that we have started our meeting oftentimes when that happens. And so we're not trying to be disrespectful. What we're trying to do is to make sure that what we're saying is heard. And Mr. Calucci and I had this conversation as well. There's a perception that our recognitions at the beginning of the board meeting are to pat ourselves on the back. And that is absolutely not what it's about. If you listen to what we're saying during those recognitions, we are recognizing the hard work of our students, of our teachers, of our administrators. We absolutely mention that we are there because that's how we know about it. But it's not to say, "Look at the good work we're doing." It's to say, "Look at the great work that's going on in our district." And so I would encourage you to take that into consideration. If you have direction to us as to how we can do that better to make sure that the message is coming across, I absolutely welcome that. But I do think it's important to understand both perspectives and where the focus is on that. So I'm going to stop talking at this point because I think I have talked long enough. I welcome any of you to follow up with me. Ms. Skipper, I think I have always returned your phone calls. And so feel free to reach out if you have things that you would like to share. I am more than happy to have the conversation.
Thank you, Ms. Belford. Does anyone else have a comment?
Madam Chair, may I?
Go right ahead.
I need to... Mr. Bradley, I appreciate your interest and your support to operate efficiently and effectively, no question. And I know Mr. Thornton can provide you some additional information with your concerns and questions about transportation. I do want to, for the benefit of the audience and for the viewing public, specifically with relation to our transportation department, I was rather close to it in my recent past, we actually have one of the state's recognized highest operating transportation departments. We receive... Although transportation is woefully underfunded from the state, we actually... The funding we do receive actually covers a relatively high percentage of our cost when compared to other districts across the state, in spite of the fact that we have a rather unfavorable bus fleet average age. And what that means is, is we, quite frankly, have too many buses out of warranty that we can't take advantage of. The reason... One of the reasons we keep a larger number of buses in our reserve is so, quite frankly, we can cannibalize them to repair the buses that we use in our daily runs, and many of them do not have air conditioning. So very proud of the fact, and I don't want it to be misunderstood, that our transportation department doesn't do a fantastic job of seeking and searching for every efficiency we possibly can. They know they're underfunded, that service is underfunded, and they continue to seek efficiencies, even as recently as saving $1 million in rerouting runs this last year that helped our overall budget. And second, I have got to do a shout-out to our CTE programs. An independent analysis of our CTE programs from Florida Trend a year ago identified it in the top two CTE programs in the state of Florida. That's evidenced by almost 40% of our graduating seniors receiving an industry certification at the time they walk across our stage at graduation. In fact, Dr. Sullivan shared with me recently that the federal Department of Education asked the State Department of Education, "Where should we go to look at CTE programs that are high-functioning, highly-effective, and are doing great things for students?" And the DOE said, "Go to Brevard County." So, Mr. Susan, it is an additional add-on to your shout-out earlier to Janice Schultz, Dennis Sobolewski, our CTE leadership under the direction of Dr. Sullivan that makes our CTE programs shine across the state. And that's only possible with the teachers that we have leading them. We all know that the effectiveness of the program is led by the passion of the leader in the classroom. So just had to take advantage of making the record a little straight.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins. As he was speaking, I was thinking about how involved you were. And with reducing our fleet and streamlining and tracking down all those old junk cars and... I know you had a big role, so I'm glad that you spoke up on behalf of the good work you've done. I would only add to that that I'm sure that Mr. Thornton will give you more information, but there's a lot of federal and state laws that guide what condition a bus can be in.
but there's a lot of federal and state laws that guide what condition a bus can be in. And so I'm not sure what a... Would you call it a juke brake that they use? I'm not sure that would fly for inspections here in the United States, but I'm sure Mr. Thornton can expand on that for you. Ultimately, we want to thank all the speakers tonight, and I want to thank the board for responding. I like this more interactive response that we are doing. Feel free to email us and let us know if you think this is... You know, it's a longstanding tradition that we sit here silent while you speak, and it bothered me when I would come speak as a member of the community. So I started, when I became chair, asking if anybody wanted to say anything, yet we still would be silent because I think it's just been tradition. And like Ms. Belford explained, it almost feels imposing or like we're starting an argument if we try to respond to some of these things. But I think it's a more open dialogue, and I like it. So let us know what you think, and hopefully, we'll continue, and you all feel free to speak up at the end there. So thank you again for taking your time to come here this evening to speak to us. This moves us on to the consent agenda, Dr. Mullins.
There are 28 agenda items under this category, one with prior information.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Susan, second by Ms. Belford. Any discussion? Please vote.
Did you ask if anyone wanted to pull anything?
Oh, we already voted. Did anyone want to pull anything? Was there anyone that wanted to pull anything from the consent agenda? Sorry about that. Motion passes 4-0. Dr. Mullins.
Action agenda?
Yes. Do you want me to read the exact lines?
No, that's okay.
We will now move on to the action agenda, Dr. Mullins.
I got distracted. Ms. Deskovich and members of the board, item G38 on purchasing solicitations.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Susan and second by Ms. Belford. Any discussion? Motion passes 4-0. Dr. Mullins?
Next, in accordance with Florida statutes, we will hold a public hearing to approve the charter application for Pineapple Cove Classical Academy at Pineda.
I think I got a... Do I got a... Pam, do I have to... Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who has come to make comments on the charter application for Pineapple Cove Classical Academy at Pineda? Is there anyone who has come to make comments on the charter application for Pineapple Cove Classical Academy at Pineda? What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Susan, second by Ms. Campbell. Any discussion? Motion passes 4-0. We'll move on to the information agenda, which includes items for board review, and will be brought back for action at a later meeting. No action will be taken on these items tonight, Dr. Mullins.
There are two items under the information category.
Does any member wish to discuss either of these items? We are now at board member reports. Does anyone have anything they would wish to add before we start? I just want to add another recognition. This week, and I think more specifically tomorrow, is Administrative Professional Day.
I forgot that earlier.
And we would be hugely remiss if we did not acknowledge our Pam for all that she does. Pam, yeah, she's getting claps from the back, too. Pam manages all five of us and sometimes even Dr. Mullins a little bit. So she has a hard job managing all of our requests and what we need and these meetings, and we are very grateful for you, Pam. Okay, now, we are on to board member reports. Does anyone have anything that they wish to add? Dr. Mullins?
Ms. Deskovich and members of the board, at this time, I'd like to invite Ms. Urker back up to the podium to provide you with a brief budget update that was part of our scheduled process. So, Ms. Urker?
Good evening again. When we met on March 12th at the budget workshop for the 1920 school year, we committed to share our budget updates with you along the path. Today is our first opportunity to do that. We have received all of the school budget requests, as well as the department budgets. My team and I are in the process now of analyzing each of the requests, comparing it to our three-year historical database, and meeting with cabinet members to discuss those budgets. I'm very pleased to say that in the initial review, many are making reductions where they can to assist the district and the board in identifying funds for the new year. We anticipate to be complete with the review by the end of May, which will put us in a timeframe to provide you your next budget workshop, reviewing all funds on June 25th. As soon as we get all of the budget requests for schools and departments approved, I believe a couple of you have requested to see that, we will get them sent out, but it will take us probably into May before we'll have that ready for you. May I answer any questions on the update?
Thank you, Ms. Urker.
Real quick, we're going to have... We will have, at that time, the June 25th, the actual numbers from the state, correct? The session will have ended, and we should have them then.
Oh, yes. We should actually have the conference report early May, and that will be one of the items we'll start working with to balance against our reductions and budgets to identify funds.
Okay.
Anybody else have questions for Ms. Urker?
Just one more follow-up. The capital side of the budget, so we're talking about operating on June 25th, is that also including the capital side, too?
All funds will come, including the capital and the recommended allocations of those funds.
So we're going to go through the same process we do for the operating side that we do for the capital, where they come from the board. The board says this is what we would also like in that process.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions for Ms. Urker? Thank you, Ms. Urker.
Thank you.
Dr. Mullins, do you have anything else?
That's all. Thank you.
Any board member, anything else? This meeting's adjourned.